Matthew.
Jim.
Here we are again.
Right on schedule.
You know, I am prepping today. I went back. I don't think I wrote a minute. This meeting, third, when we approved the growth policy statement. And then when I went back and looked down. Zoom, believe it was there. Maybe I'm wrong. Let me think. Hold it. Yes, yes, it's there. Get it? All right. I'm set. Here comes Michael the jealous. Sean is here.
Good evening, guys.
Hey, Sean. And here's somebody else on the phone.
Hi, Michael's here.
Is this Wendy?
Hello?
Hi, is this Wendy?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello?
Hello.
We've got you, Wendy.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna meet myself right now. I'm outside, so.
Okay, well, that's good. Think we're fine. The only one we're with. Waiting on is Michael Woods like. So I think we could probably get started and hopefully he'll show up. All right, this is the city zoning commission meeting for the city of Livingston, Montana. December 8th, 2020, via Zoom. And we have John Mescia present. Michael the jealous, Jim Berg, and Matthew Menard present. Michael Woods like. Is not here yet. All right, so the first order of business, I guess it will be the approval of the minutes. From our November 10th, I mean, or last, last regular meeting. So I don't know if all of you had that a chance to look that over. I can throw it up on the screen if you can remind people what we went over.
Yeah, why don't you pull it up, Jim?
Okay. Is it coming up? Okay.
Yeah.
So.
There you go.
Good. Everybody was there at the. Meeting. We had meetings for the October meeting. It was approved unanimously. They no public comment. Yeah, let me see. A little bit there about the some language changes in the bylaws, which I have not done anything with. New business, we had a discussion about growth policy and a critique of the draft document or submitted to the planning board. And then we had a discussion. And then I was to combine compile the members comments into a document. And then I would send it around review. And so. Then I guess there was a motion by Wendy, second by Michael Woods to act to set up a special meeting. Sitting on the 23rd of November to vote on the zoning recommendations to the planning board. So that passed. So I think that's everything that I said around. And anyone think of anything I've missed or any errors? If not, then can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
A motion to approve.
With second. Somebody.
Jim, also.
I didn't hear who it was that made the motion.
No, that was Michael.
Communication error. Michael the jealous, I think you are not coming through very well on audio.
Jim, I think Michael's coming through fine on my end. I think it's all coming from your end, to be honest. Yeah, you're you're kind of freezing up.
Oh, gosh. My wifi router is three feet away. Might to do. Okay.
Yeah, you're sometimes are kind of freezing up.
Did you not hear me then? I had that. Okay. Did you hear me ask for somebody to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Both me and Michael both approved.
I'm not getting through here. Not sure what to do.
Jim, you can't hear us.
Right now I'm here. Are you Michael? Yes, and I've heard very well. But are you not hearing me?
We can, but you're cutting in and out.
Yeah, that must be what's going on.
You can Wendy says maybe try calling your phone, calling in on your phone on the audio piece might work. If your wifi is not working.
Okay. Shut that off. So do you know where I'm? Would do that. Can somebody help with that?
If you look at the invite, I think that there is a phone number on that invite, either in the email, probably the email that you sent out to us.
I just posted it in chat as well. So if you can see the chat, there should be a number in there, and I will post the meeting ID shortly, which you'll have to type in to get into the meeting with your.
Well. Matthew, you were sending something around.
Can you see the chat box? If you move your mouse at the bottom of the screen, there should be a list of buttons, one of which will say chat. If you click that, it should pop open the chat and I put the phone number in there and the meeting ID as well. So basically, if you dial the number, it should ask you to type in that meeting ID and you should be able to get in with your phone. Hopefully that will work.
Okay, can you hear me now?
You're gonna mute. You're gonna want to mute yourself on.
Okay.
The actual meeting then.
Okay, this is me here. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay.
We can hear you, but.
Okay, well, I guess we'll.
And Jim, can you mute the computer audio because I'm basically getting double audio from everything?
Okay. Okay. Hello, testing. What's that echo about?
Try talking now, Jim.
Try it again here. This is fun.
Try muting your phone and unmuting it. I think the code is star six.
Yeah. No, try it again. Uh, boy.
Let me log in as the city and be co-host and we can see, I'll see what I can do quickly here. Give me one second. So Jim, try unmuting your phone and see what happens.
Okay, can you hear me now? That work? You can hear me?
We're still getting an echo. Can you try calling in again, just using that same number and ask if it works?
Okay.
Sorry. You were in and then we dropped you. You're muted currently, Jim.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
That could work.
That could work. That could work.
Hmm.
Should we restart the meeting?
We could try that.
The worst fun house ever.
Yeah, it's not ideal. We could also hope that Jim's internet holds up so that he doesn't keep freezing all the time.
Can Jim make one of us the co-host and we can screen share? He can just close his computer and just go on his phone?
I can try that. I'm currently co-hosting, so it's also recording.
Yeah, I'm not following you very well, but it sounds like after you're going to take over hosting.
Yeah, so currently we're both logged in and we're both recording. So try dropping your connection with your computer and we'll see if that works.
Yeah, you're echoing and I can't understand what you're saying. Yeah. So should I drop out then? And but I guess if I am the main. That'll. Will that stop everybody or?
I think it will keep going just because I'm co-hosting right now, so you can try that.
Okay.
The worst that happens.
What should I do, Michael?
End the meeting and we just start a new one.
Okay, I'm gonna end. I'm gonna leave the meeting. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Well, that was something.
Well, I can still hear you on the phone. Can you hear me? Well, I had a whole bunch of stuff to share, screen share with you tonight. How should I go about bringing that up again?
Um, can you send it to me or tell me what documents there are and I can screen share them?
Uh, I'd have to send a bunch of them to you. Should I do that via email?
Yeah, that's probably the easiest thing. Hopefully I'll get it quickly here. Unless someone else has the documents, then we can. Make that allow them to screen share, but someone needs to have those documents.
Well.
Michael, I appreciate the club vibe going on in the background there.
My 15-month-old is obsessed with lights and can stand on a table and turn the light switch on and off. It's super delightful.
Okay, Matthew, what I've done is the first order of business was to. We have a request from the city commission to put together a work plan for the next upcoming year. And so what I have sent over to you is last year's letter that we sent in. And beginnings of a new letter to them and also some other notes or three documents I just sent over.
I just got it. Let me forward it to my home computer and I can pop that up for you.
Okay.
Jim, which one would you like first here?
Well, maybe. Maybe start with the report to the LCC Livingston City Commission 1112, 2019.
Can you all see that? Can you all see that document that's on the screen right now?
Yeah, we've got it.
Yep, you can see it.
So Jim, it's up on the screen right now. If you want to go ahead and chat about it.
Okay, thank you very much, Matthew. So this is last year's letter that we sent to the to the city commission. On the top of that in italics is a couple of quotes out of. Out of the ordinances about oral role as the zoning commission. And then after that was a list that came from Michael Cardos, the city manager. And April of 2019, which included large format retail overlay zoning, PUDs and land use zoning tables. And then after that was just a list of other areas of interest, including changing. Or making revisions to the low test, working on housing density and affordability and traffic. And then finally, where the list of the activities to date of things we had done and then the projects we worked on. And then finally, there's a little bit there about our plans for the upcoming year, which would be 2020. So that included completion of the ADU proposal, working on the growth policy process. Both of those we have completed and then continue expanding our working list of possible zoning topics. And then working, I guess, on our next research project. And also the idea that we would have some outside experts into our meetings to to give us some expertise that we could learn from. So that's what we turned in last year. Now, Michael, if you could turn to the next document, which is has the same title, but it's the 2020 version of it.
It is on the screen, so go ahead.
Okay, so the December 29th, 2020, letter to the city commission. Activities in 2022 reports to the growth policy process. And then we went through a large format retail research and draft, dropped an ordinance. We had a COVID interruption for two months. And then we had a couple of meetings on the ADU ordinance, which was passed and forwarded to the city commission. And then our December meeting, which is tonight, when we're returning to talking about large format retail. So that was the list just off the top of my head. I'll go through the agenda in minutes from the full year and see what else we could put in there. And then I have anticipated work in 2021. Number one was completion of the large format retail. Two, revisiting the city zoning map. And then three, I put down measures to increase density in the city core. So this was just the top of my head kind of a list. And my hope for this meeting today was that we would. We would spend a whole, maybe about an hour. And my hope for this meeting today was that we would, we would spend a whole, maybe about an hour talking about, uh, the zoning map and large format retail and, you know, and I think looking at our town, big picture in terms of how it might develop and how, what we should do to do that. And then I had hoped that we would, at the end of the meeting tonight, brainstorm a little bit about what other good ideas we might have for projects for the next year. So, but maybe, I don't know, at this point, is there any other ideas or projects that people think we should work on in the upcoming year?
Jim, my assumption is that some of our project work would be defined by what is prioritized in the growth policy. Um, which I don't necessarily know what that looks like or will mean, but I would love to leave space to make sure that there's time for whatever that is. Sorry, I have my entire family in the same room with me right now.
Yeah, yeah. Life interrupts. Um, that's a, that's a good point. You know, I've read through the growth policy a few times and there's, there's a mountain of stuff in there that we could work on. It's kind of a, you know, laundry list of all kinds of things. And so I do think what we should set our own priorities. You know, it's likely if we can accomplish a couple of major projects this year, that would be realistic. But I do take your point. What I've heard from, I've listened in on a couple of the public meetings that the planning board has held. I don't know how many of you have done that, but there's a strong, seems to be of those people that have called in and there's been a pretty good group of people called in. There's a pretty strong emphasis on trying to avoid sprawl and, and working on, uh, an increased density in the city core, those kinds of concepts. So, you know, I think they're kind of thinking the same kind of thought that certainly I've been thinking and I think maybe most of you have been thinking too. So, um, you know, my goal would be, you know, to get this large format retail thing off, off our plates to begin with. Um, I, I do want to do some work on the zoning map. I've been working on that for the last couple of days and I had hoped to, um, hope to talk about that some tonight too. So, um, I don't know, does anybody have any kind of real priorities on what they think we should focus on?
I would say, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Wendy.
Yep, we can.
Um, I guess I am going to be really concerned about sprawl and how that is going to be handled. And I don't know what tangible thing that we can work on to address that. But I don't know if there's some lessons learned in, um, what Bozeman has failed to do with sprawl, what they're trying to do. I don't know how, what that might be, but, um, that's what my answer might be.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Sean? Do you have any thoughts?
Um, I think I'm in line with the same list you got there. I guess with Wendy's comment, that may kind of fall under the revisiting the city zoning map and, um, yeah, I guess just that could be a topic that we can cover in that, that number two there. In terms of, and then number three, I think, yeah, I'm on the same page with all these. I think all of these are definitely the important ones we want to continue to work on that we've, uh, we've already built a solid foundation on this year. So, um, I don't think I have anything else to add to your list.
Jim, I think this might be part of the zoning map, but I wanted to make sure that we talk about future growth sites and what our zoning options are for whatever new development may be coming into the city. Um, I don't know if that's subdivision zoning or just more general conversations about what, what that means. I think that's more of like the neighborhood planning, um, discussions and what we, how we want that to be zoned and how we want to set the tone for whatever new neighborhoods potentially come online. And then I, yeah, and then I also want to, I, and I think this might be part of the growth, the maps too, just the, how are we protecting or encouraging any agricultural development or space within like city limits? Or in new growth areas?
Okay, good. Well, um, Matthew, I'm going to send over one more document right now. Um, I just sent it.
I will check.
Okay.
All right. So the document titled zoning changes should be coming up on the screen shortly here. So Jim, if you want to, sweet, Jim, if you want to go ahead, go for it.
Okay, good. Um, I had hoped to also, I had a couple, some other maps that I wanted to share with you as I discussed this. One was the kind of standard Livingston zoning map. But I also had, um, uh, Google Maps, um, pulled up that I was going to put on the screen to, uh, to, to, to use in our discussion. Um, you, you know, I've been working on this large format retail thing for a long time as kind of a standalone ordinance and it's sort of being, um, oh, just kind of an abstract concept about how, you know, what we want for large format retail. And it, it has occurred to me in the last month that we are a very site-specific town. In other words, there's not very many places even available for like a big box store, um, certainly in the city limits. And so it got me looking very closely and specifically at, at those areas in town. For instance, the area out by Murdochs is a possibility. Um, the area out east of the hospital might be a possibility. The area out past PFL might be a possibility. And, um, so it's almost seemed to me like we needed to have ordinances, zoning ordinances or requirements that were almost site-specific. It, it kind of similar to what, um, the, the gateway overlay ordinances, that, that idea that's been floating around. And in thinking about all of that, I started looking at, um, East Park Street. Uh, there's a big chunk of East Park Street all the way from Main Street, all the way out, uh, almost to the bridge. That is zoned highway commercial. And I, I don't know, Matthew, if you have a copy of the zoning map, um, that you could put up on your screen? Um, but anyhow, um, that, it, it just seemed to me, I, one day I drove through town on Park Street from the east all the way out past Albertson's and took my camera and just regularly took photographs. And I, I was hoping to share that with you to, tonight, but it's, you know, we, Park Street is a, is, is a parking lot. You know, it, it's, other than a couple of blocks right by Main Street, the, pretty much the whole thing is, um, been developed, um, with parking lots adjacent to Park Street and then whatever businesses there are, um, are back off, off the street at the back of the property. And, and a lot of that, especially on the east end, doesn't have a, um, like controlled entrances and exits, uh, from Park Street onto the parking lots. So it's, it's kind of just this sprawling mess of asphalt and automobiles. And, you know, it really seemed to me, when we think about Livingston and what, and what is visually appealing and what it seems like most people are wanting, is, is the idea is something a little more similar to Main Street is kind of what people would like, would like their town to look like. So I got to thinking about, um, East Park Street where there are these kind of blocks that are divided up in a weird way, not like anywhere else in town. And the, the front half of the, of the block is commercial and the back half of the, of the lot is residential. But, but that first block between Calendar and Park Street is zoned highway commercial. And so if a developer wanted to, they could buy up a whole block and build something big right in town. And in my mind, that might be preferable to building out past Murdoch somewhere or way out, way out of town. And so, um, anyhow, that's an idea I've been batting around for the last week about how do we encourage that, that kind of development, um, on kind of east, mostly East Park, but there may be some places on the West Park that that would work too. Uh, and then, um, and I've done some sketching on it and some measured drawings up on that. I, I was in Bozeman a couple of weeks ago and I saw this really interesting building. If you're leaving Bozeman headed east toward Livingston and you go past the library and the park and go up that little slope, there's a building on the right side, a new brick building that's, I think, three stories tall. It's got commercial on the ground floor and then apartments up above. And I pulled into their driveway and drove around the back of the building. And the whole back of the building has got garage doors on it. So it's a very tight, small lot with adequate parking on it. There's parking indoors and then there's parking outdoors. And, you know, it's a building type that we have never used in this town. We have this problem downtown where a lot of people think we should build more apartment buildings. Parking is a problem. Where do you, in the downtown, um, part of town, where do you find sufficient parking? If you're going to bring in a bunch of more apartments. So anyhow, I saw that building and it got me thinking about, you know, there are building types and designs that, that would work in this town. And it, you know, maybe 10 years from now or more before something like that happens. But generally, if there's pressure on a community to, uh, to grow, and, and if there are constraints on the amount of sprawl that's allowed, then at some point, infill starts to happen in some of the areas in, in a town that, uh, are, the buildings are kind of worn out and they're kind of of low value. They get snatched up and then rebuilt with, with new buildings at a higher density. And I saw that a whole bunch in Seattle when we lived out there and I've seen some of it in, in Bozeman too. And we've had a couple of residential tear downs in Livingston even. So anyhow, that's the way I've been thinking about it. And then the other thought that I had that I wanted to show your way is, when we look at that zoning map, um, I think we, I think that the category highway commercial, if you look at the zoning map, and I don't know if Matthew has that up.
It's on the screen.
That was created, I'm virtually positive, prior to the freeway. And it's always kind of nagged at me that, that we have these areas, um, by the freeway overpass by Albertson's out there that are labeled highway commercial. And so I, what I would propose is that we create a new zoning district called Freeway Commercial that is, would be used at the freeway interchanges. And it has its own specific allowable building uses. And that we use the highway commercial designation for, um, those areas inside the city limits, primarily along Park Street. And that's an area where the commercial, um, businesses, um, are there primarily to serve the local population. So I just think, think that there's a big functional difference between what goes on by the freeway interchanges and what goes on in the, in the middle of Livingston on our highways. And we should have a zoning distinction that reflects that. So that was, that's what you're seeing on this piece of paper that I had Matthew put up there. The addition of a freeway commercial, um, zoning category that would be applied. So I, I just want to throw that out. It needs a thorough discussion by everybody. But I would, but I would kind of start with that. And then I, after that, on that piece of paper, I had a proposed map changes. And I kind of went through the three or four different kind of commercial districts that we have and kind of made a list of what should go on in those areas. And I think I've talked about this before where, um, you know, it comes out of this gateway overlay zone idea where we have, rather than just have a kind of a generic commercial zoning designation, we actually try somehow to specify, um, certain types of activities. And I had, uh, for instance, uh, on Highway 10 east out by the hospital. And I think that there's a development in the works out there. Matthew, maybe you know more about this, but, um, uh, I'm thinking that ground by the hospital and somebody's working on that. Dave Stanley, I think, uh, possibly to put up some retire housing. And I'm not sure what. and I'm not sure what all up there. But it seems to me if we could kind of use that area of town as kind of a, with a focus on medical stuff and on retirees. And then Highway 10 west out by PFL might be more of a high-tech kind of area with some high-density housing out there associated with that. And then Highway 89 would be focused primarily on the traveling public, which in fact is what it's largely about. And so we kind of try to tailor the uses in those three different gateways to Livingston toward those types of uses. And rather than just kind of letting anything happen anyone wants to do. As I said, I made all those photographs, kind of a tour of Park Street, driving down Park Street. And, you know, the overall impression is kind of of chaos. There's no kind of rhyme or reason to what's where. And I think, you know, the downtown area is quite coherent and focused, and people like that. And so I just think that this idea would bring some coherency to Livingston. So anyhow, that's kind of my thought. Park Street, I think I would recommend maybe stay as highway commercial, but with an emphasis on, you know, any new building that might get built on it, be front-loaded to the street edge with parking behind, and also including high-density housing and some landscaping. And then anywhere on Park Street where possible, adding some landscaping to it. Anyhow, that's kind of my thinking over the last week or so. And I, I'm throwing all of this out there for you both to think about what we want to work on over the next year. And then also, if we get some larger retail projects proposed in town, where we might want them to be located at. So anyhow, that's a big, long speech. But I, hopefully it'll, you know, stimulate some discussion and thinking about how we move forward, you know, for the rest of tonight, and then going forward. So if anyone has any comments, I'd love to hear them.
I have a quick question. Can zoning be layered? So if you're talking about this neighborhood commercial district, is this on top of areas that are R1, R2, R3? And then there's also a neighborhood commercial zoning overlay on it? Or do you zone specific areas as neighborhood commercial, and then they have their own specific requirements?
Yeah, that's such a good question. I, you know, typically our zoning is set up with separate areas have a distinct, separate zone.
Right.
One way of getting that is to do an overlay zone, so that you could designate certain areas as having some additional uses in them. And, you know, so that would be one way of doing that. And the other way might be to, within those zoning designations, make some uses that would be allowed to occur in more than one type of zone. For instance, you could, in the highway commercials, you could have high-density residential use. And in R3 areas, you also could have high-density residential use. And in the downtown business core, you could have a high-density use too. And then the neighborhood commercial, which is often seen as kind of providing really kind of small-scale office space and retail services, or convenience store kind of thing in residential areas. Could be either layered on top of a residential area, or it could be just a little bit of an infill in a residential district. One of the maps I wanted to show you tonight is, you know, there's a concept out there called the 15-minute city. And basically, what it means is that you can walk about a mile in 15 minutes. And it's kind of a newer planning idea that is actually getting a lot of traction of Toronto, Canada, and even Paris, France. The mayor of Paris, France, is intent on designating Paris as being a 15-minute city. That no matter where you live in Paris, you can get to your basic services, your food, and whatever else you kind of need on a regular kind of basis within 15 minutes. And so I did this map, and I drew one-mile radius circles, you know, with the center of the circle in various places. The first one I drew was right in the middle of Main Street. And the interesting thing for that one-mile radius is it really covers the historic part of town. So that anywhere you, you know, up until, say, 1940, anywhere you lived in Livingston, you could walk downtown in 15 minutes. And downtown had grocery stores, it had three drugstores, it had two hardware stores, it had, excuse me, five or six department clothing stores. And it was the, it was the center of the communal life of the town. It was the center of the social life. It's where the community was really happening. And so that was an interesting circle to see. And then I drew another circle with a center at Town and Country Foods. And that only went about up to Main Street. So anybody that lives east of Main Street, over on the east side, is more than 15 minutes away from a grocery store. Right? And so it just seemed, and then I drew a couple of other circles, and it just seemed to me that, you know, over time, the town is going to grow, there's going to be infill in various places. I think we do need to look at some areas where neighborhood commercial is appropriate. And I, the map I had had kind of located three or four of those kind of areas. But, you know, it needs work, and it's looking at the map as a group, and talking about it, and seeing if that's what we want to do. Okay, that was great. Any other kind of questions?
No, that's a good conversation.
Yeah, Jim, I agree with you. I like the freeway commercial idea. Kind of distinguishing those interchange locations. And I think it does separate out that downtown area along Park Street. I almost think that that whole area should kind of be in the same downtown business district zoning as like Main Street versus the highway commercial. So, but yeah, I like the track you're on there.
Yeah. I was, when I took those photographs, you know, I was driving slowly from east to west on Park Street. I'm pretty good at training in history, and as well as architecture, and I'm pretty good at spotting when buildings were built, and, you know, what their original uses were. And I could just picture Livingston growing from the center out east. There's a whole area out there that was clearly the ag in the town. And most of the ag in Park County was up the shield in terms of growing crops, and a quite a bit of cattle up there too. So that's where you have the two elevators. That's where the John Deere dealership still is. There's welding shop, a couple of welding shops out there. You know, that's kind of what was happening out at that end of town. And then a little closer in, you kind of see more automotive stuff going on. There's a couple of body shops. There's a couple of used car dealerships, and some mechanic stuff there too. So we're kind of, you know, there's kind of these clusters that are there, just kind of, that have developed organically. And they tell a story in some way. And I think, you know, if the town is legible, if you understand, if you, as you drive through it, if you kind of get a feel for the development of a town, or the logic of it, or, you know, what's the story here? What's going on? Why is this here? I think it just helps you kind of know where you live. And, you know, it just makes you kind of feel at home, I think. But the way it is now, it's become so broken up, and, you know, just kind of random scattered businesses, or this type and that type. And we get, and there's so much, you know, there's not a barrier between Park Street and these businesses in terms of how cars come and go. And so as the traffic on Park Street gets more and more dense, it's getting harder and harder to pull onto Park Street or off of Park Street, you know, if you're out in one of these areas trying to do some business. Anyhow, that's my take on it. So my thought on the East Park Street is visually, that one of the best things we could do is to have in the zoning that new developments are built out on kind of on the street edge, just like Main Street is, and that the parking's in the rear. And it just creates more of a streetfront effect. And it also kind of controls and controls traffic. In other words, you have to pull off of Park Street, onto a side street, and then go into a parking lot. So if we get busier and busier and busier on Park Street, we may someday need some additional stoplights. And that's going to help with that. So I think these can be pretty good improvements. For me, the, one of the most important things, though, is how do you, how do you get sort of higher-density housing in the core of the city? And how do you deal with the parking? That's really the hardest part of this problem, I think. All right, what time do we got? We got 6:30. Does anybody have any? Matthew, can I ask you a question? Can I send around to everybody? Just because my computer screwed up here. Can I send around some of these documents to everybody that has this information on? I know we're supposed to all do this, you know, together as a group on Zoom, but it would be nice to kind of send the documents around, at least, to everybody. And, you know, I'm just trying to jumpstart. The original intent of this meeting tonight was to talk about large-format retail. And the part I was trying to concentrate on was the parking problem with large-format retail. And we haven't gotten too specific about it. So I'm just, I'm just trying to get a bunch of work done. I keep hating to drag this stuff out months to months to months. So I'm wondering how we can have some work sessions.
So you can send any documents you want. I would ask that you just BCC all of the board members, so you don't form a quorum under state law when you send an email, which is not what we want to do. And to the work session item, if we do want to schedule additional sort of in-between meetings, if that's amenable to all of the members, we can talk about that tonight as well, just as sort of work sessions.
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe, if you don't mind, what I'll do is I'll make a collection of, I had about six or eight sort of documents, some of them are maps. Maybe I'll just make a package of all of that, and then kind of write a cover letter on it. And then I'll CC that all around to everybody. And then, and then see if people are willing to get together a second time. I'm not sure if December makes sense. I don't know what people's plans are. I'm not up to too much. But it may have to happen in January.
So I know that Hanukkah does start, I think it's Friday. So I would ask that we don't hold any meetings during religious observations, which in this case would be Hanukkah, Christmas, and Kwanzaa in this month.
Matthew? I make dynamite latkes, so you're invited over.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Well, it's 6:35 or so. I'm just wondering where we can go with this. I, yeah.
Jim, can I suggest something as well? While you should only BCC any sort of materials to the entire commission, if you all do want to talk about administrative items, like setting up meetings, you're certainly welcome to do that over email, all on one email chain. That's not going to break any sort of state laws. Technically, a quorum is only formed when you are talking about something you are or will be making a decision on, something that you had wrote on in the end.
Okay, so we could actually, I mean, a lot of this, I mean, we typically are having lots of discussions on this stuff, kind of picking each other's brains and learning from each other. And, you know, as long as we sort of designate a regular zoning commission meeting for any decision-making, are we pretty much free to carry on?
No, so anything that potentially, and in your case, it's going to be basically anything that's a zoning issue, I would ask that you don't talk about altogether over email, because there's, it probably trips open meeting laws and quorum rules with state law. Really, you should stick to things that are administrative if you do want to discuss those over email. If not, technically, we should be noticing when your emails are going to happen.
Say that again, we should what?
So technically, if you discuss things you should, are making decisions on, which is basically anything to do with zoning, we technically need to notice the fact that you all are going to send an email together, because we're supposed to notice any time there's a quorum formed, which can be formed over electronic means specifically in state law. So basically, that's a very long way of saying, if you're going to talk about anything to do with zoning, please don't talk about it as a group outside of a meeting. Administrative stuff is fair game to talk about whenever you want as a group.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess at that point, I'm kind of running out of steam. I talked a lot tonight. I have a lot of ideas, but a lot of them kind of have to be, you know, based on sort of drawings and maps and whatnot. I think I finally realized that for me to kind of envision what this town is and could become, I almost have to think visually and three-dimensionally to kind of do my thinking. So I think what I'll do then is I'll send around a package to everybody by CC. I think what I'll do then is, is I'll send around a package to everybody by CC and then probably given that the holidays are coming up, we'll just wait for a regular meeting in January to, to, to deal with it. Does anyone else have any suggestions?
Oh, I just unmuted. Jim, if you send in your packet like some specific requests or suggestions on things for us to think about or research or consider before our next meeting, that always helps me be prepared for our time. So I would appreciate any of the, any of the maps and anything you have.
Okay.
Yeah, it gives me some time to think about stuff.
Great, thank you. If I have like six documents, I'll send kind of a cover letter with maybe a little description on what kind of the issues might be. Okay, thank you. Any other, any further thoughts on the work plan for the upcoming year?
Hey Jim, can I just jump in with a, a couple of things that I'm going to throw at you in the next month here?
Okay.
So just so you guys are aware, and I'll make this quite quick, we need to zone two parcels that were annexed in the fall. So you should be seeing both of those next month. This should be pretty simple. One's Mayor's Landing, so we're going to propose zoning it public to keep it apart. And the other one is a single residential parcel sort of northwest park. So nothing too complicated, but just be prepared to see those next month.
Okay. Okay. Sure. It's nice to do those small things. You feel, we feel like we accomplished stuff. Okay. Well, sorry about the glitch. Matthew and/or Michael, do you have any recommendations for me? I'm sort of thinking like I need to get a new router. I'm not not sure what this problem with my Zoom connection is, but.
The first thing I would try is to directly plug your computer into the Wi-Fi router with an ethernet cable if you have one. And if you don't have an ethernet cable, let me know. And I have about 40 in my apartment that I definitely don't need and I can, you can just drop by and I'll give you one. That's the first thing to try.
Yeah, I can do that, sure.
And have you re, Jim, have you like reset your router recently? Like turned it off, let it sit for 30 seconds and then turn it back on?
Well, it does hang up on occasion. I probably turn it off and start it up once a week or once every two weeks.
I would just unplug it totally. Yeah, I would just unplug it and see what you can do. We also, I don't know what, I don't know what internet provider you use. We've definitely called Spectrum before and had them like check on our connection and just see how things are working. They're, they usually can do remote testing on your connection points. That might be another option if turning it on and off and ethernet cables don't work.
Yeah, and if you're, if you go to speedtest.net, it'll tell you sort of how fast your internet is moving. And if it's like way below the speed that you're supposed to be getting, definitely call whoever your internet provider is and see. It may be their wiring or maybe wiring in your house that's somehow throttling your internet. It seems to be a bigger problem when it's windy, so that might be part of the issue.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I've been a lot, you know, enough Zoom calls where there hasn't been a problem. It's just, it, the last two of our meetings, I, we've had this kind of interruption and it's embarrassing. I apologize.
And it may be that because you're hosting and recording at the same time, it's using a lot more bandwidth than it would be if you're just in a meeting. So it may be worth testing next time if you could log on as a different account and I will record it and we'll see if it's just the fact that you're overloading your internet by trying to stream, screen share and record all at the same time may be causing problems.
Okay. All right, I'll work on that. I'll be a much better boy next time, I promise. Well, if nobody has anything else to say, yes, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
See you guys.
Bye you guys.
Bye.
Hi, everyone.